Good evening, everybody. We even tested this first, too. Welcome to our school board meeting for February. We're going to go ahead and get started at 6:30. And if you will join me in the flight saloon. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we do have a student. I was on a roll. It even says we have a student.
Good evening, everybody. Testing. Oh. All right. Good evening, Board. Good evening, guests. Tonight, I have a very special guest. This is Mr. Wyatt Schindlin. He's in the fifth grade in Ms. Dixon's class. Wyatt served on the superintendent advisory committee this year and is a great helper and leader at school. Along with being a great helper and leader, he loves reading best. He loves football and playing with his friends. He's been at Barnesview for quite some time, and we're honored to have him. Everybody give him a round of applause. We're honored to have his family in the back who joined us as well. And it's such a pleasure to have such a great and integrated family into the Barnesview community. Wyatt's going to join us by saying the pledge of allegiance. Our flag is right here in front of us. And let's join us by taking off our hats and putting our hands over our heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wyatt, and thank you, family. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for nominating Wyatt and his great leadership abilities, as well as Ms. Dixon, who wanted to honor him for being an outstanding student. Thank you for your time tonight.
Good job, Wyatt. This thing is really loud. Okay, Ms. Tammy, we have a quorum tonight, all three members. All right, 2.0, agenda additions, deletions, revisions, and agenda approval.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Second?
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as it is in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye as well. Thank you. And 3.0, recognition. 3.1, we're going to turn this over to Dr. Hoff.
Thank you. So about four years ago, we looked at some student data, and we saw that students that were involved in an extracurricular activity, whether it was sports, performing arts, clubs, they had better attendance rates. Those that were involved had better attendance rates, thought of school better, as well as higher grades even. So we made an intentional effort about four years ago to boost our club enrollment in the types of clubs that we have. One of those, I heard about this club about two years ago called Esports. And we have a student here today. And Parker Smolich can come up now, as well as Ms. Eberhard and Mr. Huffman. And Mr. Huffman's going to tell you about Parker and how he started a club.
All right, yeah, so we're going to just have to push those buttons. But we have Parker Smolich here. He's kind of the, well, he's the student that has really had this thing take off for us. And then Natalie Eberhard is the advisor of the club. And she's going to talk about how it's really picked up momentum and is actually starting to become a sport now. So she'll talk about some of the competitions that they do. And then Parker will share his experience because he's really the originator of the club. He's the godfather of this thing, so.
Is that working now?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, around three years ago, I heard over the intercom that there was an esports club. And I didn't have any friends at that point because I'd just joined the school. So I was like, sure, I'll try it out. So I went down there. I met Ms. Eberhard. And she was the nicest teacher ever. And yeah, ever since, I've just been helping her grow the club and continuing it and get more people into it. And yeah.
So we started out with Parker and one other student. So we had the grand number of two. Then we got to about three or four the next year. We had about 10 or 15 that started coming last year. And now we have a minimum of 20 and often 30 kids that come into my room for lunch every day. Most of them play on consoles and things that the school provides. Some of them bring their own equipment. One of the favorite games is Smash Brothers. That's always super fun. We can also get at least eight students playing that at a time. They also love Mario Kart. And those are two of the sports that are actually in our tournaments now. OSAA, Oregon School Athletic Association, actually supports esports. And those two sports are supported by OSAA. We also have another company that is called Play Versus, Play VS, that also has a number of other video games as well that are in tournament. And we have three students that are doing Madden, NFL 25, and two students that are doing Fortnite, Zone Wars this year. So we've gone from zero students in tournaments to now we have 12 students that play in tournaments this year. And we're hoping to grow that even more. On that note, if Kim is here, Kim Meltzer, if you could just stand up in the back and wave. Kim is one of our community members that came to us this year through Mr. Huffman. She has organized for corporations gigantic tournaments that are amazing for several years. And she has moved recently to Prineville and is hoping to help us grow the club and support it even more and make the sport even more. The great news about it, like any sport, there are scholarships available. There is a college-level esports as well that students can get involved in and earn scholarships to college, just like any other sport. And they can also letter. So we're very excited about that. And then, any questions? You can direct them to Parker now.
Parker, I just want to say that you are cutting edge. I went to a leadership conference in 2019. And I came back and I told Joel Hoff and Sarah Johnson, "You better get ready for Esports. They're coming." And we're not, we've never heard of them before in this district. And Sarah, I think she kind of laughed, but Joel kind of got it at that point. And there's been some effort to implement it. And I'll tell you, when you go to college, you will find more people like you who can't wait. This is your instant entree into getting to know people and being, belonging on that campus. So thank you for leading the effort, and I hope your peers get there. I did have one question for you both. Somebody explain it to me in simple terms. How mechanically does competition among different schools work in an esports realm? Because it's not the same as everything else.
So it's through computer, of course. Everything is technology these days. So the coach, who is me, gets online, lets the system know that we have players that are ready to play, and then they get matched with players. So for OSAA, it's players here within Oregon. With Play Versus, it is students anywhere on the Pacific Northwest, so Oregon, Washington, California. We all meet at a certain time, 4 o'clock, 3 o'clock depending, and just say we're ready to play, and then we get matched with a competitor.
So you don't have leagues like we do in other kinds of sports? It's like all Oregon playing against all Oregon?
Yeah, so there, right now, there are 19 teams that are playing Smash Brothers. There are six teams that are playing Mario Kart. And Play Versus, it's a much larger organization, so there are hundreds of schools. But based on your record at the end of the year, you can go to state tournaments and finals and all those kinds of things that every other sport does. So it's pretty amazing.
And who manages the brackets for all this? Because that's wildly complicated.
That's all Play Versus and the OSA Esports that does it online.
Fascinating. Congratulations, Parker, and all your friends.
And then, just last thing, I'd also like to acknowledge that the Smolich family is here. We can't do this without the support of parents and community. So thank you, Grandma, Grandpa, Mom, Dad, Sister, and Brother. Whole family came out. It's pretty exciting. And it shows you how Parker has become such a leader to have that family support. So we're very thankful for that.
I do have a question really quick. So how many tournaments do you play in?
We normally play in about four a week, depending on the sport. Well, certain days are certain games. So Wednesdays are Smash Bros., and then Thursdays would be Madden and Mario Kart and Fortnite. And then we get all those games out of the way. And then the next week, we would do it all again. And then, yeah.
So tournaments are every week? It's not just like once a month or something like that?
No, so we have, there's a fall term. There's a fall league and a spring league. So it's about two and a half months of weekly tournaments. Or it's a preseason to kind of get ready to make sure all the technology is working and things are going well. And then we do weekly for about two and a half months, twice a year.
And then do you travel somewhere, or is it all just, you can stay home and do it?
We do it at the school. And then the travel would be if we made it to a state tournament, then we would, with OSAA, be able to travel to that tournament. With Play Versus, if we made it to a tournament, then we would play in the region. Depending on where that, they kind of, it moves around depending on, you know, sometimes it's in Washington or Oregon, California for that Play Versus.
Okay, thank you very much. Nice job. Thank you.
They ask all my questions, so.
Hey, we've got a quick, just certificate of recognition. If we want to do a quick picture, Rich is ready. All right. Next up, we actually have a community partner that we wanted to recognize who's made a big donation. So I'm going to have Kimberly Bonner come up and BTL representatives.
Do that. But that is okay. We can just stand. We won't take very long, I promise. Just come stand right here. So I think all of you know that our pride and joy this year has been our outdoor classroom. It has been just such an addition, a timeless addition to Crooked River Elementary. Might be hard to believe at this moment in time, but it gets really hot out there. So to the point where our students really weren't even able to use it very much in the fall. With all the windows on every side, it got very, very hot out there. And so, BTL has made two 20 by 30 sunshades that are going to protect 80% UV. Did I say that right? So, and they've put, made it with D-rings, right? Look at me go. Look at me go. So we can put the tarps up and we can take them down with ease. And they should last for at least five years. And by that time, the trees that Snyder planted should be big enough to provide shade. So this is a really big deal. It's going to make it where we can use that outdoor classroom all the time. Well, maybe not right now, but in the fall and in the spring. And so when I looked at Travis, and I said, "So just ballpark, like what are we talking here?" And he looked at me and he said, "I'm just going to donate them." So we are so thankful and so grateful to BTL. We have Travis and Diesel and Cash here. Did you guys make them? I haven't even seen them yet. Okay, you did?
Yeah.
Perfect. Well, we are just so grateful. And we just want to take this opportunity to thank them publicly. So BTL, thank you.
We got a certificate. I don't like pictures, but we got to take a picture.
One quick question for you guys. How many Kirk County grads or students do we have in this group of three? We got two. All right. Thank you for giving back.
Thank you.
Okay, our last recognition. We, you know, we did a student, we did a community member. And do you know how hard it is to hide that you're going to recognize the person that puts the agenda together? So I wanted to, it's been tricky. I've had to be a little sneaky. So Jen and I talked. And what a lot of people don't realize, Tammy, who's just sitting here, always sitting here so quietly typing minutes, she does so much work. She helps the Board. Whenever we have a meeting, she's putting together an agenda. She's literally typing the minutes I'm talking about right now. So we just wanted to publicly thank her for all the time that she's put in. She's such an amazing worker, so dedicated. She's the one that, you know, everyone will be gone, the lights are off, and Tammy's light will still be on. So we just wanted to celebrate her. I got to be, I, she didn't ask, Joel, who are these flowers for? So please join me in giving a round of applause to Tammy.
Very well deserved. All right, Dr. Hoff, thank you. All right, 4.0, the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well. Thank you. Turn the page. Okay, and we go down to 4.13. Is that correct? No, I'm sorry. 5.0. Okay. Are my notes out of order, or am I good? If we go to 5.0, school board update?
Yep.
Okay, 5.1, calendar committee appointment. I knew my notes were out of order.
So before we start that, just a question. Do we have it in policy that there has to be a board member on the calendar committee?
Good question. This is completely up to the Board whether they want to fill that replacement. The calendar committee is met once. The calendar still needs to get approved by the Board, so you can have input there. This is just if the Board wants to have a replacement member on that committee.
So generally, Madam Chairman, it's been my experience, it's good to have a board member there because if there's going to be board concern expressed, it's better to hear at the committee level than at the board level. However, there are three of us, and there are 8,000 policies to read between now and the next policy work session. So I think this would be the year to take a pass on the calendar committee. I'm sure they're doing fabulous work. And their last deliberations online, if anybody wants to watch it.
Okay. I, are you making a motion on that?
A negative motion?
That's why I was asking.
Right.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So we're going to move on from 5.1. 5.2, public records request waiver of attorney-client privilege. So we met earlier in regards to whether we were going to release the executive session meeting. And do we have a motion on the table?
Madam Chair, I move to waive the attorney-client privilege with respect to a passage in the executive session minutes from the December 9th, 2024 executive session, so that the full set of executive session minutes can be released in a response to a public records request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to go ahead and waive the attorney-client privilege regarding the executive session minutes from December 9th, allowing for the release as discussed. And we have a second. Is there further discussion? All right, let's vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. 5.3, board member application screening committee. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Bradley. Hi, good evening.
Okay, I'm not sure how much info you need, but I want to quickly start with thanking the committee members. Ms. Wood, Mr. Forrester, Ms. Hempill, Mr. McGuire, Ms. Songstad, Mr. Looney, Ms. Puckett, and Ms. Pepper. And you beat me to it. But without Ms. Parker, we wouldn't have got anywhere. I quickly realized who runs things behind the scenes. She was very, very helpful. The committee had three meetings. We had a meet and greet. And then the second meeting, we discussed questions to ask and also reviewed applications. There were four applications, two for Zone 3 and two for Zone 1. Our third meeting was interviews, which was all, the public could watch everything. All the meetings were public meetings. Basically, I'll get right to the point. Do you want to hear Zone 1 or Zone 3 first, Ms. Chairman?
Let's go Zone 3 because they were vacant first.
Okay. Zone 3, we had two applicants, Ms. Laura York and Ms. Kelsey Swick. The vote was 7 to 2 for Ms. Swick. And Zone 1 was Eric Osborne and Mark Mayball. And the vote was 4 to 4, and one abstained. Each applicant was informed that we were only a recommendation committee and that ultimately it was the Board's decision. And you may want to, you may want to do further interviews or whatever process. We weren't really sure. I'd like to also thank Mr. Hoff for being there late every evening, along with Ms. Parker, to help set up everything. And it went smoothly. Everybody was, we were impressed with all four, just so you know. All four applicants were very good applicants. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but in your list of people who were acknowledged, you didn't acknowledge yourself. So I would like to thank you for serving on the committee and for taking on chairing. And I watched it online and, last night, and it was a pretty efficient process. Kevin, good job.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for doing that. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
You ready for motions? So I believe we have to do these in the order in which they were vacated. So Zone 1 came first, that's...
Zone 3 came first.
Zone 3 came first, right, sorry. Let's do the wrong number. And so that's the one where the committee did have a recommendation for us. And I thought, in watching online, the committee did a pretty good job of vetting the situation. So I would move to appoint Kelsey Swick to the Zone 3 position through June 30th of 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Zone 3 vacancy for Kelsey Swick. And we also have a second. Is there further discussion? Okay, so let's vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I would like to note that Laura York was an amazing candidate. I enjoyed listening to her interview. I give a bit of a nod to Ms. Swick because she currently has children in the district.
Okay. And then, do we have another motion?
This is the one where the committee split. So I don't know where everybody is at. You mean, my position would be watching both of them, that they are thoughtful, they are intelligent, they are committed. The one difference I saw, the big difference, is that Mr. Osborne has elementary children in the system. No other member of this Board has elementary children, and that would bring a voice that we do not have. And so my preference would be for Mr. Osborne. But certainly, that doesn't mean that Mr. Mayball would not be an excellent board member should he choose to run and capture that position in the future. No, but it brings up perspective you need. So.
A different perspective. And that's a good point. We do not have anybody with elementary children or middle school. Do we have a, go ahead.
Make a motion if you're ready, or I move to appoint Eric Osborne to Zone 1.
Are you making a motion?
I'm letting a team make a motion.
Okay, that's, okay.
I'm making a motion. I just did.
Yes, you did. And do we have a second?
A second, it's his motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Eric Osborne to Zone 1 through June 30th, 2025. And we have a second. Is there further discussion? It seemed like all the applicants were strong. And I can see why this would be a divide on it, so. Any further discussion for Zone 1? All right, let's go ahead and do a vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. And thank you for the committee that took all of the time to do that, for everybody that did that and vetted and went through all of that. That's very much appreciated. Okay, we're going to 6.0, superintendent update. May I get a hand this over to Dr. Hoff?
Yes, thank you. So 6.1 is our volunteer initiative update. If you remember back about a year and a half ago, the Board set a goal as part of their strategic plan to increase awareness and volunteer opportunities throughout the district. I was actually hoping we'd have a bigger crowd tonight because we want to do a kind of open call for volunteers and remind people that we love to recruit volunteers. Mr. Simmons has joined us in the Director of HR and Communication role. So he'll be leading up volunteers. And as soon as a volunteer fills out the application, he'll reach out, kind of try to fit and match them in a skill and a place that would do best. With increased interest in the school district lately, I was hoping to leverage that into getting more people helping out, particularly around elementary reading. We've got a great elementary reading program at Crooked River, for example. They, you know, there are certain days where volunteers come. They all go in the cafeteria, and they read one-on-one with students. And it's such a powerful thing for each student to have someone to read with them. So that is on our website. You just go to About Us, scroll down, Volunteers. You fill out a background check. And then, once that gets approved, you can fill out a link telling us how you want to volunteer. Then Rich will reach out to match you in the right spot. So make sure, I'm going to say it one more time. Go to our website, About Us, scroll down, Volunteers. There you can fill out the background check, and Mr. Simmons will get ahold of you. So we'd love to have as many people helping as possible.
Okay, thank you. 6.2, I know that we had received a report. And Dr. Hoff, can you...
Yeah, I'll walk through the written report we received. So this is an annual report that comes from the ESD. This is, they are required by statute to get approval from the local school districts on their LSP, which stands for Local Service Plan, which just describes the services. You have four handouts as part of the written report they sent. This orange-yellow-orange-looking one, that is in your board packet. That describes the services that the High Desert ESD provides. I put, we got some more stuff in there for you as well. What I did, Ms. Logan put together a nice report that says, "What are the services that we purchased last year and how much we paid for those services?" Tonight, by statute, you guys are only approving the menu, saying, "Here's what the ESD does provide." On March 20th, our district leaders, so directors, will go through the budget with the ESD to then decide what exactly we are going to purchase, what services we need. This year, there are some services that I don't think will continue. We really want to be, have those services match our needs. There are some awesome things the ESD does, like, you know, some special ed services, some key personnel. They help facilitate our sub-process for our certified. But there's also things we want to look at that have the Boards reprioritized around. Maybe it's time to put some funds into driver's ed. So we'll sit down as a cabinet team with the ESD personnel. And from there, on March 20th, we'll say, "Here's what we need to purchase. Here's what we need from you." Tonight, this is only an annual thing with the Board approving the regional LSP. If the Board, I also put in a, there's a timeline in here that I found. And this goes through the annual process on the LSP and ESD timelines. This is actually all by statute. So any questions? There's a, the ESD provided a sample resolution, but we also could just do a regular motion that's in your board packet to approve the LSP for next year.
Sorry, Dr. Hoff. Where is the, oh, there's the row. Okay, I found it. Never mind.
It was a thick packet this month.
Madam Chairman, I move to adopt resolution 05-2024-2025. It's on 6.2, 05-2024-2025. The resolution adopting the Local Service Plan.
Second.
But should it, should it be 25-26?
You know, I'm thinking because we're adopting it during this school year. I'm looking over at Anna.
So the resolution numbers are for the year that you adopt.
So the resolution numbers are for the year that you adopt the resolution. Just above that, where it says Local Service Plan, that is for next year.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to adopt the High Desert ESD Local Service Plan for number five, 24-25. And we have a second. Is there further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. Literacy Council update.
Yeah, I'll invite Ms. Loenbach and Ms. McLeod. As they're coming up, I want to give some background on the literacy council. So this is actually something that Dr. Skinner started that I believe is spot on with what we need to be doing. Looking at our elementary data, we're right around the state average. So we've had 44% proficient, 44% proficient, and then 40. So our three-year average is around 43%. So we want to target this and put some of our best minds on it because although we're right around the state average, we want to accelerate. We know that 40, you know, around 40% is not good enough. So Amber and Carrie are going to tell you all about the literacy council and what they're doing to focus our district's attention on improving literacy.
Carrie and I are facilitating the literacy council, and we'd like to just update you as to what we are doing during that time. What is the literacy council? So our literacy council consists of approximately 25 educators, K through five. Within those educators, about 15 of them are elementary teachers, five reading specialists, and three administrators. This council is open to all interested staff and educators that would like to be members of this council. During this time in our meetings, we collaborate to improve our students' literacy skills and areas of need within literacy. We have decided to task ourselves with three literacy goals. The first goal is clarity and alignment in K-5 instruction as well as assessment. And in a further slide, I'll go into little detail about that. Data procedures, intervention protocols across all elementaries. And we're looking at ways to identify best curriculum intervention and resources in Tier Two and Tier Three instruction and to support our students there. Create a PD plan to equip staff with our proper skills and delivery of that quality instruction and materials needed to support our students with their interventions. Hopefully, we will get the ability to have time for additional tasks. And our goals with there as well are alignment and classroom questioning to the rigor of the OSAS questioning, setting SMART goals with Dr. Hoff I just spoke of, but a timely goal that we could set with desired outcomes for literacy goal. And create a title advisory team and review the district's title practices. What we've already accomplished is looking at aligned assessments to identify school student, or excuse me, student deficits. So looking at our universal screeners and then creating a flow chart that goes a little deeper within that, seeing where the students are lying, and then go into diagnostics to see that area of need and so the support that the teachers can provide those students. Our current curriculum, we're looking at the review of supporting curriculum for our students as well as identifying multiple curriculum pilots for the screens, excuse me, for the spring. How we're measuring our success is we want to raise students' assessment scores, and we're going to be looking at those scores. We're dibbling, progress monitoring for those strategic and intensive students two times a month. And our benchmark, our universal benchmark, all elementary students are receiving a DIBbles benchmark three times a year, along with our eye-ready diagnostic. We're also going to be reviewing our OSAS summative assessment scores as well to reflect on our progress. Clarity and alignment of elementary literacy systems, again, we're going to be looking at that, collaboration and reflection. Our next steps for the council, we're working on achieving the three primary goals previously talked about, the professional development, the alignment, and Tier Two and Tier Three supports, along with piloting materials throughout the spring, and assessment of materials and the best placement within that. And also looking at creating a family engagement plan. And we'd like to report back to you on our progress in May. Any questions?
I have an observation and a concern for you. When we started this work under Dr. Skinner, Dr. Skinner's approach was to come in and say, the board and myself have identified a problem as identified by state scores, and now we need to start talking about solutions. And what got omitted there was an opportunity for the whole system to come together and talk about, do we have a problem? And what is the problem? And what do we think the root cause of the problem is? And then, how are we all going to agree that we're going to measure the performance change that will lead to that? And then start the solutions, identification and implementation. When I see this presentation, I'm still missing that big picture conversation that I think is essential, that happens outside of administration. It has to happen at the building level with the people that are teaching every day because these people are teaching their hearts out. There is no question in my mind. They're smart. They are all as frustrated as the rest of us as to what this is doing, but when you ask them, why is this happening? You'll get about a million different answers. So it would be a really good thing to pull people together and have that conversation first and establish that common ground before we repeat the same mistake all over again. So I would beg you to incorporate that into your plan design.
Absolutely. Agreed.
The other thing I would add is, you know, I have long thought and argued from this table that there's something wrong with the score system Oregon. I mean, Exhibit A, I have never met a Creek County graduate who couldn't read. So somewhere, we're picking up that skill set. But I have to say, when the NAEP data came out last week, and at the national level, this thing is a disaster across all 50 states, and Oregon is one of the worst performing states. NAEP is not the state benchmark test. It's not ridden with ideology. NAEP is a straightforward can you read or can you not read and comparing our state to every other state. It showed the same concerning data trends, which, to the degree I was already worried about this, now I'm really worried about this. And I think this is the essential question we have to get to the bottom of, while noting that Creek County is still ahead of the state average. And while we got a problem to fix, we got less of a problem to fix than everybody else, but we got a problem to fix.
No, I agree with everything that Scott said. Yes, well said.
We'll plant a report back to the board in May, just an update on the progress. So stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you for throwing yourselves into this. It's an important issue.
All right, 6.4. I'm going to have the tech team put my screen up. So I believe we took a challenge from the board at our last policy work session, and the board tasked us, and I'm looking back at Mr. Eric Ryan, said, hey, is there a way for the community to look at the policies that are under review by the board as well as provide feedback? And I believe Mr. Ryan and our tech team knocked it out of the park. So this is to inform the community and the board. So you'll see here under the CCSD, Community Spotlight, if I click on this Community Policy Input Form. What you'll see here, I'm going to zoom in a little. So every policy that's under consideration for the board, our next board work session, policy work session is February 24th, is on this form. Members of the community, anyone interested, like BDDH, Public Comments Board Meetings, if they want to see the draft that the board's considering, they just can click there. Pops open the draft. And then if they want to give feedback, they can type in this area. So, believe it or not, we got a lot of policies in the queue. So anyone interested can review those drafts of those policies, submit feedback. I'd remind people to make sure, even if you're just giving feedback on one, make sure that you're going all the way down and hitting Submit. It's turned off, we haven't turned it on yet, but you'd hit Submit. And then, I believe the board also asked that people can see the feedback that people give. So right underneath there, that will take you to the live document that shows the feedback that people have given for each policy. So feedback for EBB. So that will populate as people fill in that form. We will get the feedback to the board prior, we'll turn it off the morning of the board or the policy work session, print out the feedback, and the board will have that as you're discussing the policies at the board work session. That will go live tomorrow. Mr. Cooper?
Can you go back to that spreadsheet?
Yep.
Would it be possible to hide column B so people aren't having to put their email addresses out in the public for other people to email them and tell them how wrong they are?
We can definitely figure that out. I think what we'll want to do, we'll leave something that just says, if they'd like someone to follow up with them, we'll figure that out. Keep.
Keep personal information.
Yep. Great catch. We can figure that out. That should go live tomorrow morning. So, and then we'll get the board the feedback as it comes in, prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Do you have anything?
Madam Chairman, can we do one other thing under Superintendent Update? Which is that, earlier in the meeting, we went right past it if you weren't looking. There was an approval of the interim superintendent contract, which appointed Joel Hoff to be our superintendent, interim superintendent for the next 18 months. He'll be here through June 30th of 2026 unless he exits. I would like to thank Mr. Holliday for negotiating the contract on behalf of the board that ended up on our agenda, but I'd like all of us to take a minute to congratulate and applaud Dr. Hoff for sticking it out. He deserves his last moment of applause he'll ever get.
With a smile nonetheless. Okay, moving to 7.0 Finance Report. Ms. Anna?
Finance's report is in your packet as always, and it's also posted online. If you could look at page three, I just want to make a couple of notes. Since you see this every month, I generally try to just update you on changes. The only major changes that have happened since last month are that we have the additional expenses for the superintendent contract payout included in this new projection. And then, the literacy materials that we had planned to purchase and then paused the purchase on are no longer in here. So there's kind of a net neutral impact to the finances between those two things. On line four, that's the state school fund revenue, and that hasn't been updated in a while. Normally, this time of year would have received a new state school fund update from Oregon Department of Education. And they actually get their information from all the school districts, and it rolls up into a big data pool that then they recalculate the state school fund and give us a new update. So I'm thinking, usually they give it to me right after I've presented to the board, so I'm hoping that'll happen. But that could impact our state school fund estimate. And just keep in mind, it's not just our school district that makes the impact, that makes changes to that. It's all the variables for all the school districts across the state. I just have an interesting fact for you on page seven. Often I talk to you about funds that are in the negative because we have to pre-spend and then request reimbursement. The student investment account is an exception to that. This is one of the few grants that we don't do that with. We actually are able to claim 25% of the grant each quarter whether we've spent it or not. So right now, the student investment account actually has a positive balance, which is nice because we can actually earn some interest on it instead of pre-spending and then getting reimbursed. So that's just something that you might find interesting. Not included in the finance report, I just want to give you an update on the audit request for proposals. We did send out a request for proposals for audit services, as I mentioned at the last school board meeting, and we received three proposals back. All the auditing firms had comparable and impressive qualifications and experience. One of them, which was Clear Trails, was considerably less expensive, so we plan to move forward with that firm. One thing I realized this morning is that it's a five-year contract, and when I add up each of those five years, it just exceeds that 150,000 threshold that requires board approval. So I will plan to bring to you next month a request for you to approve that contract. Any questions on that?
So Anna, there was hubbub a month ago about the elimination of the forest fees. The county payments bill was not re-approved. Is that for next year or is that this year we will lose?
You know, I'm never sure on there. We usually receive those funds late in the fiscal year, so I'm not sure which year it's for. So that could have an impact on our revenue as well if that isn't. But honestly, I've worked here for over 12 years, and I think every single year that has been the situation where everyone thinks it's going to go away and then it shows up.
And then, could you clarify, there's been a whole lot of hubbub in the news this week about Department of Education maybe going away and funding going away. My, I read one news report that said it's 10% in some districts. It's miniscule in this district. Is it not a federal funding that flows through to us?
It's not miniscule. If you look at all the federal funding, we do receive $700,000 or $800,000 in Title One. We also receive Title Two, Title Four, and then just the Nutrition Services Fund alone is over a million.
I hadn't thought about Nutrition Services.
Yeah, but the, yeah, I'm not sure what will happen with federal funding, but the freeze that happened a while ago had no impact on any of the programs we work with.
But the, now, the USDA money, that flows through USDA, not Department of Education, right? So if you take that out, we're talking, what's flowing through Department of Education? A million?
Very rounded number.
Thank you.
So that's all I had on the finance report. Would you like me to move on to 7.2?
Yes, please.
So 7.2 is another opening for Budget Committee Position. We had a resignation from Position Nine, which was Mark James. And his term would be expiring, will be expiring this June. So we just need the board to declare that position open if you would like to offer it to be refilled to serve for the upcoming budget season.
Madam Chairman, I move to declare Budget Committee Position Nine as open.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to declare the Budget Committee Position Nine as open. In a second, do we have further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Aye.
And aye as well. Thank you, Anna, on that.
Thank you. Which leads us to 7.3, which is Budget Committee Appointments. We had previously a Budget Committee opening for Position Ten, which was declared open in November. So it's been open for a while. We have done some advertising for that. And so now, so the Position Ten is a three-year term, which would expire in June of 2027. And now we have Position Number Nine, which is just one more budget year, which really is just a few months, but it's through this coming June. We have actually received two applications, and I've attached them in your policy, or sorry, in your packet. There's no policy requirement for the length of time to have the positions open, but since they, one position has been open for as long as it has, and there are no zones for the Budget Committee, you could, the board could, if you choose, appoint someone to both positions now, if you wanted to do that.
So it's okay to open Position Nine?
Yes.
And five minutes later, fill it?
Yes. You do not have to do that.
It's an interesting idea.
Because either candidate had the opportunity to apply clear back in November.
Madam Chairman, I move to appoint Laura York. Madam Chairman, I move to appoint Laura York to Budget Committee Position 10 and Jonathan Lent to Position Number Nine, to serve the remainder of the term.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to appoint Laura York to Budget Committee Position 10 and Jonathan Lent to Budget Committee Position Nine, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Just under discussion, the reason I selected Laura York is because she was also an applicant earlier for the board seat. And she's also the former chair of the County Budget Committee. So has good, solid experience and interest.
Anything else, Mr. Holliday? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I as well. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Okay, upcoming dates. We have no school district-directed staff development, February 14th, this coming Friday. We have no school on Monday, President's Day, February 17th. School Board Policy Work Session is February 24th at 5:30 at the District Office. School Board Meeting, March 10th at 6:30 at the District Office. And then we also have the School Board Policy Work Session, March 19th, 5:30 at the District Office. Moving to 9.0 Public Comments. If you wish to make a public comment, please complete a comment card prior to the start of public comments. If you're reviewing online, please indicate that you would like to speak in the comment section. When you're recognized, please state your name and any group you're representing. Keep your comments to no more than four minutes. A bell will chime when 30 seconds are remaining, and another bell will chime when the four minutes have ended. A group of visitors with a common purpose should designate a spokesperson for the group. And if you wish to request that a board consider an agenda item, please contact the superintendent at least one week prior to the next board meeting. And then per Policy BDDH, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. If you have a complaint about a specific staff member, please contact the superintendent or the board chair. And with that, we have Tammy Prescott.
Is this on? All right. Hello, once again. Last time I was here, it was all about Simon's Hook, and the key phrase is, "Don't take the hook. There's five other things you can do." Makes a big difference in our classroom, for the safety of our classroom, for students feeling comfortable and having a way to have agency for those little things that come up that a teacher isn't there for every single one of those things. They need agency, okay? So a second one that I have is called the Eight Great Smarts. Once again, this is for the classroom. We can do all kinds of things with literacy and math and science, but if our students do not feel safe in the classroom, if they do not feel like they have a place of belonging, their brains are busy with that stuff, and they are not picking up on what you're teaching, okay? So the Eight Great Smarts, long ago, Dr. Gardner did multiple intelligences. So if you've been in the education system, you have heard of that. This book is family-friendly, teacher-friendly, and kid-friendly. It takes the same multiple intelligences that Dr. Gardner presented, and this doctor, Dr. Kathy Cook, she is a doctor in educational psychology and in reading is her PhDs. And she has made those intelligences really, really friendly and understandable. So in the classroom, I used this my last five years of teaching in fourth and fifth grade classrooms. We did a lot of things with this. Once again, just like Simon's Hook, I started it right at the beginning of the school year. This is another one I started. I'm kind of an independent little person, and so I, you know, take on things and things I think will work in the classroom. And when they prove successful, I continue with them. So that's why I want to share this, okay? So you might be asking, "What are the eight great smarts?", which is a really good question. So there's word, logic, picture, music, body, nature, people, and self. Each one of those elements has a way that that person thinks, okay? So for example, word-smart people, they think with words, okay? Picture-smart people, they think with picture. Nature-smart people, they think with patterns, okay? So each one is very specific. All people are born with these smarts. They are a part of how our human body works and how our brains work. We just happen to have four top ones and four bottom ones. In this book, it encourages you to grow all eight. Don't cop out and just say, "Oh, this is what I'm really good at, so this is the only thing I look at." Intelligences grow, and we can grow by using them and practicing them, playing games with them. The students got to know what their smarts were, their top four, their bottom four. They wrote me letters. We did T charts. We did all kinds of things. And in the end, they understood who they were and their gifts and their strengths. They understood everybody else. So when we did groups, they came together and created a classroom where we got a lot done. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jack Ravenberg.
Did I turn it off? I guess I turned it off. Shame on me. So my card said, "Board Responsibility." That's kind of a, kind of a broad term, kind of a broad statement. I'm up here to say, "Shame on you." Each one of you should be ashamed of yourself. Each one of you. You had the opportunity each day for better than four months to spend time with the previous superintendent at the school district and offer any and all suggestions. I guess you didn't have any negative suggestions until the mob with pitchforks and torches showed up in this building. Shame on you. Shame on you for answering questions when you said you weren't going to take questions. There was a whole gym full of people that didn't get the opportunity to voice their concerns. But you listened to the mob that was here in this room. Shame on you. Shame on you for taking over the chair when you were out of line. Shame on you for not standing up when people made accusations that were false, and you knew they were false. I'm embarrassed to say I'm from this county and a member of the public that's represented by this school district. We should all be embarrassed. We ran off a school superintendent with 29 years of experience, not a black mark on her career, and we ran her out without tar and without feathers. But we ran her out. And each one of you are responsible and should be embarrassed and ashamed of pox. I'll tell you what, me personally, the next time you come to the public and want money for this school district, I will work my ass off to make sure it doesn't happen.
Okay, 7:30, and we are going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.